This public hearing is now called to order in just approximately six minutes after 10:00 a.m. Today is Tuesday, April 29, 2014. This is a public hearing on a proposal to amend Chapter 23 of Title 24 of the Rules of the City of New York. Chapter 23 deals with food service establishment, sanitary inspection procedures, and letter grading. My name is Martha Robinson. I'm Associate General Counsel of the Department. And also here today is Corinne Schiff, who is the Director of Special Projects for the Division of Environmental Health. Purpose of today's hearing is to elicit public comments and information to assist the Commissioner in determining whether to adopt this amendment to the rules. A notice of intention and notice of public hearing regarding the proposal was published in the City Record on March 28, 2014. A copy of the first page of the notice of intention has been provided to be reported to include in the record. The hearing is scheduled from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Persons wishing to speak at the public hearing were asked to preregister. You may also register now if you wish to speak, and you will be called on in the order which you register. The first person registered to speak is Andrew Riggie. Is it Riggie? Could you please spell your name for the reporter and indicate what organization, if any, you represent?
Absolutely.
And press the button...
Got it.
...to make it for the red.
Good morning. Andrew Riggie, R-I-G-I-E, New York City Hospitality Alliance. Good morning. As I said, my name's Andrew Riggie. I'm the Executive Director of the New York City Hospitality Alliance, which is a trade association representing restaurants and nightly venues throughout the five boroughs that happen to be regulated by the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. As always, it's good to be here. And as you've probably heard, the Alliance and others report, you know, over the past decade, fines levied by the Department on Food Service Establishments have skyrocketed. You know, I think it was in 2012, fines peaked at over $50 million, which is an enormous amount especially to be levied on the small business community. And it's no secret that we have had occasional conflicts with the Department, but we don't believe the conflicts have been over whether or not the restaurant industry wants to ensure high food safety standards. In fact, we believe New York City, being the culinary capital of the world, should have the highest of food safety standards throughout our establishments. Rather, we believe some of the conflicts have been related to the amount of fines that have been levied. And we do believe today's proposal is a very important step in helping to reform the regulatory culture and create a better relationship between the industry and the Department. So, in the spirit of continuing this beneficial process, we'd like to bring to your attention a few additional items that we believe require additional modifications that are found in your proposal, with the goal being to achieve the proposal's main goal of ensuring high food safety standards while reducing regulatory burdens. First, while the proposal does include many violations that are now fixed and see a reduction in fines, there are other sections of the proposal where the fine is the maximum penalty allowed by law and not the minimum. For example, violation of Code 15i would result in a first-time fine of $400. Yet, the administrative code states that the penalty shall not be less than $200 nor more than $400 for a first-time violation. This proposal also fixes many condition Level 1 penalties at $250 per violation when the rules allow for a minimum penalty of $200. Now, finally, last year as part of the Regulatory Reform Initiative, multiple city agencies were tasked with identifying violations issued to restaurants and other businesses around the city that could allow for a cure period before a violation is levied. Not surprisingly, many of the violations identified by these various agencies were for improperly or missing posted signs. We always joke around the restaurant industry that, you know, we need a whole wall of just signs in our restaurants. So, we're happy when many of these signed violations were identified that would allow for cure periods. Perhaps it's a coincidence, but as we were reviewing this proposal, we did find that violation Code 15i, which I referred to earlier in my testimony, is actually issued for a fine violation, not being signed, not being posted conspicuously. So, while there were other agencies that chose to eliminate or at least allow for a cure period for fines for signed violations, in this proposal to reduce fines, the Department actually seeks to levy the maximum fine allowed for this signed violation. But overall, we were happy to work on this proposal. We do, as I mentioned earlier in my testimony, believe that this is really a step in the right direction. The New York City Hospitality Alliance really does look forward to working with the Department so we can work on outreach, education to the food workers, to the restaurant industry, to ensure high food safety violations while we can reduce fines, burdens, and hopefully allow every restaurant to adorn it A and continue to get As within the letter grade system. We believe that creating a fairer system, reducing fines, will allow restaurateurs to keep more money in the local economy, grow their business, and of course, you know, focus and invest on additional food safety practices. So, we support this proposal. We seriously hope that you consider making a few of these additional modifications. We believe will also go a long way in reducing this regulatory culture, reducing fines, and ensuring high food safety standards. So, I want to thank you again, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Riggie. The next person registered to speak is Vincent Tropebi.
Good morning. Before I get into my planned remarks, I just want to introduce myself and give you a brief introduction as to who I am and what my credentials are to make my testimony substantial as an expert in my field. My name is Chef Vincent Tropebi. I am a 25-time certified chef, holding certifications in 13 cuisines and the others in restaurant operations, one of which being food law. I hold numerous gold medals and awards on a local and national level. I have been featured in numerous publications, and this fall, I will be the youngest inductee into the Culinary Hall of Fame. I have been fortunate enough to have gained a national platform as a chef and have had the honor of cooking for many persons of interest, such as former presidents, former mayor Rudy Giuliani, Yankee Hall of Fame famers Yogi Berra and Phil Rizzo, and seniors such as Michael Bolton and Pavarotti. My testimony today is based on my experience as a restaurant consultant and restaurant defense strategist, as I own and operate Brooklyn's only restaurant consulting and restaurant defense strategy office, called Tropebi and Associates, located at 8821 30th Avenue in Bay Ridge, Brooklyn. As a restaurant defense strategist, it is my testimony that is based on my exposure that I have had within the Oath Health Tribunal, and I've had to defend restaurants within that system numerous times. After I graduated culinary school, I was lucky enough to understudy with some of America's best chefs, such as Alain Ducasse and Iron Chef Morimoto, for example. They had personal hands-on involvement with me as I was in their kitchens learning. Through the years, I myself have been honored to also gain much momentum in my culinary adventure, which has earned my career, much exposure on a national and local platform as a chef. After all the time that I have dedicated to chopping, dicing, sauteing, and to pursue the making the perfect sauce and garnishing plates perfectly, I never thought that someday I'd be taking an active role in the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Because of my intimate relationship with the proper structuring of restaurant operations, food preparation, and execution, I have been a restaurant consultant for the last seven years, often in addition to my regular culinary responsibilities. It goes without saying that any system and service that has consistency will not only have more credibility, but also naturally earns the respect of the public. It is with this that I can never understand why a city agency would allow different fine amounts for the same violations and severity. I have personally seen this many times for cases that I have defended clients for. This inconsistency only furthers the lack of confidence that food service establishment owners and operators have with the Department of Health. I encourage the Department of Health to spend its resources in the proposed prefixed fine amounts for each code, section, and severity in the Oath Tribunal. The City of New York is where I call home, is the birthplace of my career I'm thankful for, that I'm very much thankful for. But when I walk into a renovated Department of Health office or Oath Tribunal office, I take a look around in my seat, these new seats, and I say to myself, "Restaurant owners paid for these new seats." And when I see big flat-screen televisions on the wall, I say, "Wow, restaurant owners paid for those big-screen, flat-screen televisions on the wall." And when I hear an employee speak my name to call for a case through a new speaker system, I say, "Wow, restaurant owners paid for that new fancy microphone system the employees are talking through." It's very easy to sit behind a desk and judge someone and someone's business, but I would like to know how many times a judge thinks about the dollar amount that they are assigning to a case and the effect it will have on that small business. And better yet, I would love to see some of these irrational judges trade in their suits and ties for chef jackets and aprons and see what it takes to really please the dying public. In closing, the restaurant business is not like any other type of business, and the City of New York should be recognizing the financial risk-taking, the creativeness, and the ingenuity their restaurant owners and operators possess. And it is those qualities that make their food scene in New York City the best in the world, and it is those characteristics that can never be judged by an Oath Tribunal judge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tropebi. I'd like the record to reflect that Elliot Marcus, the Associate Commissioner of the Bureau of Food Safety and Community Sanitation, is also here to hear the testimony. I have one other person who's registered, Mr. Eric Baker. Do you wish to speak?
No, I pass.
You pass. Is there anybody else here who wishes to speak? Okay. If not, then we will close the record for the moment and reopen it when other people appear. And if nobody appears, the record will be reopened and ordered to 12 to adjourn. Thank you. We are now back on the record. It's 11 o'clock, and some, we have additional testimony. Sir, would you please identify yourself for the record and your affiliation, if any?
Yes. Mark Nealon, N-E-A-L-O-N, Safe S-A-F-E Restaurants Consulting Company. Good morning, Ms. Robinson. Good morning, Mr. Marcus. Yeah, I just want to put on the record that I feel that tying the judge's hands to prevent him from mitigating violations is injustice. I would point out that the proposal that's before us is already in effect to some extent. In particular, permit violations are a mandatory codified $1,000 fine. There was a time not too long ago where that violation carried anywhere between $200 to $2,000. Certainly, there were instances where, say, a restaurant faithfully renewed their permit every year for 10-plus years, just one particular year because maybe a $50 late fee at a tribunal hearing that they didn't know about withheld their permit renewal. Presenting this type of defense or explanation to the hearing examiner would certainly reduce that fine. The hearing examiner would look at the situation and say, "Here's a place that has faithfully renewed, is in good standing with the Health Department. Okay, a mistake happened, but you know what? There's 100 permits on a restaurant's wall. They all expire at different times, different dates, so this oversight should be mitigated." Now, on the flip side, there may be somebody who comes in after receiving a no-permit violation who says, "Yeah, you know what? I've been there for five years. No one ever told me I needed a permit." Then the judge can say, "Well, you know what? That's five years of not being inspected, of the Health Department not, you know, putting this place on the radar, and that deserves a $2,000 fine opposed to the guy that got a $200 fine." Today, if you have a permit violation, nine times out of 10, when you sit down before a judge, the judge will apologize and say, "Listen, I'm sorry. There's nothing I can do about it, so no matter what you tell me, my hands are tied, and I have no choice but to fine you the maximum $1,000 fine." So, I think if you carry that to all the violations, I think you're going to just hurt the industry, you know, immensely. I know that it was something in the proposal that said that the idea was to, or the thought was that there were going to be less fines as a result of this proposal. I would highly question that because I know over the years, every time there's been fine increases, the number-one reason that the Health Department has stated for that is because restaurants only respond to higher fines. And higher fines are what are going to drive home the idea that these violations, you know, need to cease or need to be corrected. So, now to go 180 degrees and say, "Well, we're going to lessen the fines," I don't think makes any sense, and I don't think it's all that truthful to the industry. So, that's it. I appreciate your time. Wish you all a good day.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. We'll go off the record now. Back on? All right. The hearing is now open. Sir?
My name is Alan, A-L-L-A-N, last name Rattigan, R-A-T-T-I-G-A-N. I'm the owner of AR Restaurant and Catering and former Spohr in Queens. The penalty, what the city has posed on the restaurant is putting us out of business. It's ridiculous, and I, and if they go to charge you $20, $10,000 fine, how can you pay that fine and still survive in business? I'm paying $4,200 a month for rent, plus light bill, utility bills, pay staff, and the fine was, right now, the fine is like $3,000. How can I afford to pay the city $3,000 as a small business owner, just started the restaurant a year ago? How can I survive? I put all my pension, everything in the restaurant. I'm in the red right now. And if the city, you ask them if you can schedule a payment, they told you no. Everything has to pay in 30 days. They said they want to close it up. You invest everything you have in the business, and the city don't work with you. They're sending people come out to the restaurant who is not well-trained, who is dirty, who is filthy, and they have to go back to their office with some fining, some violation. Last violation I get, when I go to the hearing, the judge almost threw the hall of violation because the inspector was lying, and she wanted to charge you different, find a penalty for different things where it's not there. You know, and this is unfair to the small business owner. If you are struggling small business, how can you afford those fines for the city to charge you? It's ridiculous, and I hope this mayor have promised us before election that he's going to take a step, he's going to do something about it, and I hope he do something about it. Especially the Westinland Restaurant, we are penalized more than anybody else. We have signed a petition and sent it to the mayor for the mayor to look into it. You know, you can afford $1,000, $2,000, $3,000 fine, and then you have overhead expense. I would like the mayor or somebody to come out and tell us how we can survive in business. You know, because it's ridiculous, and we are struggling. Right now, I'm backward in the rent, in light bill, gas bill, because my light bill is like $700, $700 a month. Gas is like $500, $600 a month. Telephone bill is like how much a month? I'm paying staff like, like over $1,000 a week. I'm working for nothing. I can't even afford to buy gas to put in my truck. Every month, after going to my saving to subsidize the restaurant, and then the city come in and put in these ridiculous fine. You know, it's, it's a sad case. It's really sad. And if you want the city trying to promote small business, but you're not promoting small business, you're tearing down small business. Tell me what, you can't get a loan, because if a small business start, no bank giving you a loan special for a restaurant. You have to use a one-personal saving and put into the business. And every month, you have to put in the business, and then the city come and harass you. Every second, they come and harass you. If they come, and I want to know, they come up with these ridiculous violations, or they come up with these letter. The letter system is wrong. The last time they come to my restaurant and they inspect it, and the girl told me that, "Oh, you're going to get a B or a C." When I go to the hearing, the judge throw it out and give me a ride there. And these letter is wrong. People come and see a C on your building, are pending grade. They don't want to come in the restaurant. They think it's something really terrible when it's minor. She, they come in here and she's a fool. They don't understand about Westinland food. That's number one. And they come in here, they're going to tell you that the food has to be 140-degree. Certain food you put on the steam table, like haki and salfish, if you put 140-degree in 10 minutes, it's no good. It's no good. They don't understand. I laid a complaint at restaurant next to me, complaint, they say two slices of cheesecake. Cheesecake, once it baked, nothing can wrong with cheesecake. And it's supervised it down, and the, and the next inspector, you have to give a violation for those two slices of cheesecake. Yeah, they have to go back to their office with something, and this is wrong. You know, and I hope the mayor, this mayor, promise us before election that he's going to take action, he's going to cut out the letter grading and thing, and I hope he step in. The fine is wrong. One of the guy who washed the dishes, sit around the counter, inspector walking, was just drinking water and thing. He come in, it's $275 in fine to drink a glass of water. That is ridiculous. You come in, she come in, she didn't see any food drop on the floor. If you into a kitchen and the chef cooking, skeleton peel, and those things are going to be on the ground until the chef finish cook, and you clean up and everything. She come in, she said she come and say skeleton peel on the ground, she said food on the ground. If a chef inside a kitchen cooking, if he eat black to your home cooking, things going to drop on the ground until they finish. You're not putting it, serving it back to the customers. This is wrong, and we small people are penalized badly. You know, and we ask the city to step in, properly train these inspector before they send them out, let them know what the guideline is. If you ask them a question, some of them don't want to talk to you. Don't ask me anything. One came in and just put a sign and just run through the door. I don't have to ask you any question. What I do now, I have a video camera, and any one of them come to my restaurant, I'm going to put them on camera. I'm going to video it. Because these, these inspector are not properly trained. Some of them come into your business space, they are dirty, they are filthy, they smell, and how can you send out a dirty inspector to come and inspect food? That's not right. You understand? Inspector supposed to be clean, hygiene. You come in to test food, you're supposed to be clean and hygiene. They come in, they see the Jamaican soda, every restaurant sell it, everybody sell it. You come in, you taking off the label, reading the label. I said, "What you reading the label for?" Everywhere about they sell Jamaican soda. It's not backing the restaurant. He want to charge, want to charge. If you have Jamaican cheese cut in the restaurant, Jamaican restaurants scared to sell their own cheese from their country, because if they come in here and say the cheese cut, they want to charge you. Say the cheese is no good. One came in here and saw, "I don't sell catfish. I have codfish. Codfish is different from catfish." And he go back and write up the report that he come in and see, "I have codfish," and the codfish wasn't properly stored. When, when I go to the hearing, I said to the judge, "I do not sell catfish. I sell codfish." It's two different thing completely. Codfish is something what you, it's salt and something you put in, you cook out proper little salt. Nothing can wrong with it after you cook out the salt. They make it with the akki and salfish already cook it up by itself and sell it for breakfast. And they don't know the difference between codfish and catfish are two totally different And these are the things what we small business, small restaurant owner have to go through every time these inspector arrive. We have to go through it. If waste your time, you have to go to hearing to fight them, to eat for them, for the judge to neither dismiss or cut them on the charge. Many time ago, some of the judge don't do it. Depends on the judge you get at the time, because they feel like the inspector is right. What I do now, as I said before, I have a video camera, and anyone walk through my business door and put in everything on video. You understand? And I decide to publishize it and let everybody see. Because we want fairness like everybody else.
Mr. Rattigan, your five minutes is up.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Young little lady, do you wish to testify? Yes? Okay, you have five minutes. You have, the reporter has to copy your name down, so...
Okay. Ayesha?
Can you turn on your microphone? Just press the button so it's...
There's a red button. There we go.
My name is Ayesha Badon.
Can you spell that for me, please?
A-Y-E-S-H-A-J.
A-Y...
B-S-A-J.
H-A?
B-E-G-U-N.
B-E-G-U-N?
Okay. Yeah, I'm coming from the, I have, I have a passport just with, and then 56397. I'm not in the city like it's three months because I missed the all letter, so that's what they send me here. That's all. I, I missed the, they, they send me the letter, it's going to the other store. It's not coming in my same address.
Are you saying that you have a different address?
No, I have the same address. They send me the letter for the other address, my next store, this, it's all letter going to the other store.
Oh, so you need to, you need to notify the Department of your current address?
No, I have, they knows the current address. This is the, the two building is the same.
Is that all you want to talk about, is your address?
No, I missed the letter, so that's what they, I don't find there any letter for them.
Okay. Do you have anything that you wish to say about the particular rule change that the Department is doing? department is doing?
Rule change, they send me like a letter for $200 for nothing, $500 for, I don't really understand why they send me the $500 fine. They, they send me the $500 fine for what reason, I have no idea.
Do you have anything that you wish to say about the change in the rules that the department is proposing?
Not really, no. I don't, I have nothing to do.
All right.
I just want to know why I missed the letter, I don't know that.
Okay.
And they send me the, fine for the $500, so I have no idea for why they send me the $500.
Thank you. I think this hearing is now adjourned.
I have to catch after him on...
Okay, it is now 12 noon. This hearing is now adjourned.
Where's, did you have a fine also?